Okay. Okay, we're on. They gave us the thumbs up.
It's four o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call the March 23 meeting of the Salina City Commission to Order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 I would invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now it's time for the Citizens Forum, a time for citizens to come before the Commission to address the Commission for on topics that are not on the official agenda. Is there anyone here from the public like to comment? Not will go on to awards and proclamations. There are none, no public hearings, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved at minutes of March 6, 2009. Item 6.2, approved at minutes of March 9, 2009. Item 6.3, approved at minutes of March 12, 2009. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 096610, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease purchase agreement with UMB Bank leasing for the purchase of golf carts. Item 6.6, approved purchase of three E-Series ACLS manual monitor deep river leader case units from Zul Metal Corporation in the amount of $74,600. Item 6.7, authorize an agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation for a state-funded railroad crossing safety program. Item 6.8, award of contract to place 11 Parks and Recreation Building Roost, Project Number 092752, to Midwest Siding in the amount of $26,260. Item 6.9, award of contract for the 2009 crack and joint sealing project number 092751 to Mission Construction Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $240,547.50. Item 6.10, award of contract for the 2009 micro-surfacing project number 092750 to Baloo Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $416,680.
Are there any items that Commissioner would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I have a question on 6.10.
Okay. Do you want to ask it or do you want it pulled?
Okay. I'm not sure who to direct it to. Mr. Gage, maybe. Are we just stuck with a single bid situation every year on this project?
Well, that's a good question. I'll let Dan go ahead.
Yeah, Baloo Construction is one of the only micro-surfacing companies around. They actually did a lot of work in Kansas City as well, and then we only had two bidders in Kansas City. So, I guess I do not believe we get a lot of bidders on this job, and they typically do a lot of work around the state. It's a fair number. I'd like to get more, but we don't really attract, I don't think we attract a many other bidders on the project.
I'm sorry. Dan, do you know how the unit rate this year compares to prior years' unit rates for the work?
It's an increase, and based on the increase, it's about a 13% increase from last year, and it's historically gone up 10 to 15% each year. And asphalt kind of has done that in the last few years as well, and it's the same oil basically that's used in the micro-surfacing. So, it's within line of our, what we've seen over the last year for asphalt increases.
They're not very responsive to economic conditions, then.
In this case, no, it didn't seem like it. That's correct. We had more people pick the plans up, but it was mostly just for crack seal. That's really the only capability. We have a big enough micro-surfacing program. You need a machine for it and a crew for it, and most of them aren't equipped for the size of the program we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Everybody, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The moving seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. There is no development business. We'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0910489, annexing a 7.2 acre track of land into the corporate limits located north of Feds and Ridge Edition and east of Presbyterian Manor.
This ordinance was passed on first reading March 9, 2009, and since then, no comments have been received. Are there any public comments now? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 09-10489 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 0910489 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jelkow.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Banier.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 0910490, annexing a 10.97 acre track of land into the corporate limits located east of the First Christian Church.
This ordinance was passed on first reading March 9, 2009, and since then, no comments have been received. Are there any public comments now? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 0910490 be approved on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 0910490 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jelkow.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Banier.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 0910490, annexing a 9.23 acre track of land into the corporate limits located directly north of 2727 East Crawford.
Ordinance 0910491 was passed on first reading March 9, and since then, no comments have been received. Are there any public comments now? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Banier, I move that we adopt ordinance number 09-10491 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 0910491 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jelkow.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Banier.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.4, second reading ordinance number 0910492, annexing a 36.15 acre track of land into the corporate limits.
This ordinance was passed on first reading March 9, 2009. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any public comments? But I do understand this needs to be postponed.
Mayor Banier, I move that we postpone item 8.4, postpone second reading until the plat has been approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone item 8.4, which is ordinance 0910492, for second reading until the plat has been approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.5, Resolution Number 096611, amending Resolution Number 046028 to extend the neighborhood revitalization plan tax rebate until June 30, 2009.
Mr. Hobbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, in December of 2008, when we brought to you the first extension of this program, we had anticipated at this time we would have a complete program revitalized for you. We would have a plan that had a draft of the area as well as a new draft requirements within the plan for plan requirements of each individual requesting a tax rebate for this area. We had worked in cohesion with the comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan is not completed at this date, and that was where the main focus of our revitalization area was going to come from, is from the comprehensive plan, the change of use area or the area of change. We have not completed at this time. We ask for another three months' extension to where this will be approved until June 30, 2009, at which time the comprehensive plan should be completed far enough that we will be able to bring back to you a complete planned map as well as various documents we'll need for that comprehensive plan or for the revitalization plan. I'd be glad to stand for any questions.
Questions of staff. Thank you. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I'd move that Resolution Number 096611 extending the present neighborhood revitalization plan until June 30 to be approved as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 096611, which extends the neighborhood revitalization plan until June 30, 2009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.6, Resolution Number 096609, showing support for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, providing funds for trails and beautification projects.
Mr. Snyder.
Mayor and Commissioners, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 provides funds under the transportation enhancement categories for communities that have previously committed to planning phases of construction of transportation enhancement projects. The City of Salina recently applied for these transportation enhancement funding for three segments of the multi-use trail that was presented to you last fall, as well as a pedestrian bicycle segment trail along Schilling Road as part of the South Ninth Street improvements. Also, we submitted a request for funding under the scenic and environmental category for landscaping, for planting 265 trees at four different locations. In addition to the Schilling Trail project, the other three segments include a segment from Kenwood Park by the YMCA and the site of the new aquatic facility through Oakdale Park to Walnut Street, Riverside Park, starting at Elm Street to Lakewood Park, to Lakewood Discovery Center, passing by the middle school, Lakewood Middle School, and the last segment was from Bilburg Park to Ohio Street following the River Channel. The tree planting project proposes planting 73 trees along both sides of Pacific from Ohio Street to Front Street. This is the area of the new overpass. Forty-five trees along South Ohio from Magnolia to Schilling Road, 140 trees along Schilling Road from Ohio to Ninth, and then seven trees at the northwest corner of Magnolia and Ninth intersection. The stimulus projects are 100% federally funded and administered through the Kansas Department of Transportation. If approved, the city would be committed to having the projects obligated by March 1 of 2010. Any preliminary engineering would be the responsibility of the local governing agency. The total funds requested for the trail projects is $2,086,937, and for the landscaping was $79,000. The project applications were submitted March 18. That was the second round deadline. One of the requirements is the, for the application is the resolution of support. Since the Commission did not meet last week, we sent the application in, talked to the Kansas Department of Transportation. We weren't the only community because of league meetings and spring break that did not meet, and therefore, we're here today with the resolution of support, and we'll submit that following approval if approved. As I mentioned, the total preliminary engineering would be responsibility of the local community. In our case, if all four trail segments were approved, it would be $112,200. At his staff's recommendation, the resolution of support be approved and submitted to the Kansas Department of Transportation for use of transportation enhancement funds set forth by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, Resolution Number 09-6609. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
The funds that you applied for will also take care of irrigation, things like that?
No, this, on the tree planting was just the labor, purchase of the trees, and contract labor to install the trees.
Install the trees.
Yeah, any of the watering in the initial years would be a part of our city's responsibility as well.
There won't be permanent irrigation?
No.
For those areas, okay.
We did specify in the application, I think it was a two-inch caliper tree, which is a fairly large tree, which obviously would require less initial watering, but would require some, depending on weather conditions as well.
If we're granted this, are we going to have to give back our bonuses?
Have our bonuses?
How many of us got bonuses?
I must have, yeah, well, anyway, I don't know.
Every cup of coffee, Mayor.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this is largely speculation, isn't it? I mean, there, every city in the states doing this?
Well, in this particular category, the transportation enhancement, for the state of Kansas, there's $10.4 million available, and there's three different categories, and one, obviously, trails, and the other is scenic, and then one is historic. You have to have planning already done, so it would not just have been something you could say, "Let's just do this." We've had the plans, obviously, the preliminary. You have to commit that by, like I said, March 1, so that really puts you back in a bidding stage by the end of this year. It was strongly suggested in any of these projects, and some of the reasons we picked these segments, if you have to acquire right-of-way, you don't own the land, you're probably not going to get any funding. So, these areas, we have the right-of-way or we own the land, control the land, the areas that we're going through. So, it's not, it will eliminate or reduce the number of potential projects because they had to have some progression on a project before this money, this came out.
And we're only asking for 20% of the state's money, maximum, so, okay.
How long do you think it'll take before you know what's their deadline? Back to you.
In...
In approval.
First of April.
First of April.
Any other questions to staff? Thank you. Any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve Resolution Number 096609 in support of an application for funds for trails and beautification under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 096609. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.7, first reading ordinance number 0910494, amending Chapter 35, Section 35-137 of the Salina Code pertaining to construction, reconstruction, and repair of sidewalks.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try to keep this brief, but in summary, Kansas statutes currently provides that it's the duty of abutting property owners to keep their sidewalk or the adjoining sidewalk in repair, and then makes distinction between two scenarios where a sidewalk would require repair. One being condemnation, not in the terms of typical condemnation of property, but condemnation in terms of it's in such a state of disrepair, it needs to be torn out and replaced, or just standard repair. It goes on to make those distinctions such that the city commissioner governing body by resolution has to make the determination that a sidewalk merits condemnation, while the city engineer or city clerk can identify the need for repair and provide notice to a property owner. Our city ordinances provide that we will follow the provisions of the Kansas statutes annotated as a broad reference without providing a lot more detail in terms of that process. Additionally, there is a home rule provision that allows for the delegation of governing body authority, provided that there is a reasonable standard for the exercise of that authority. So, the resolution that you have before you has the intention of exercising the home rule authority to delegate that authority to the city manager or their designee to make a determination in terms of whether a sidewalk merits condemnation, full tear-out, and replacement. And to establish that reasonable authority then would take a resolution, which is the attached item. So, what you have before you is an ordinance amending our current ordinance provisions to delegate the authority of the governing body with respect to condemnation. In the event that you choose to act on that ordinance at second reading, you'll then need to pass the resolution that establishes the criteria by which staff could exercise that authority. With that, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Oh, I wish Aaron were here.
Yeah.
Our man on the sidewalk.
Questions of staff.
Yeah, there's some stuff in the blue sheet, about four paragraphs, bottom of the first page, top of the second page, and this thinks that on the third page about Section 35, maintenance required removal and reconstruction, talking about driveway approaches and recessed parking areas.
Correct.
But there doesn't seem to be anything about that in the actual resolution. What...
There are two provisions in city code. One references sidewalks and invokes the authority granted by the Kansas statutes. There's another section that references the maintenance responsibility of driveways and recessed parking areas. The reason that that's reported in the blue sheet is there has been some confusion in the past in terms of citing those two sections.
So, how does this resolve the confusion? I mean, I'm confused.
Well, the confusion related to sidewalk repair, and basically, there was a broad reference to statute without the, you know, specific detail provided by code. This clarifies the provisions of our code as it relates to sidewalk repair and makes them more clearly consistent with Kansas statute. The reference to the driveway maintenance was just an explanation of the past section that was referenced incorrectly as it related to sidewalks.
So, are sidewalks and driveways and approaches actually treated the same?
The authority for sidewalks comes directly from the Kansas statutes. We have similar language about driveways. That's a standalone provision in our code and would stay that way, but that previously was incorrectly cited as the statutory authority for sidewalk repair.
Oh.
We have...
I think that was a yes.
And I apologize.
So, it does make it consistent that the sidewalk repair and driveway repair will operate virtually the same.
Yes, it leaves the driveway language the same. It clarifies the sidewalk language, and to have, previously, our notification letter cited the driveway language as it related to sidewalks, and the recipients that actually looked at this language with respect to their sidewalk were looking at the wrong section of the code and saying, "This says driveways. It doesn't say sidewalks. What's your authority to tell me I need to repair my sidewalk?" The authority existed all along. The wrong code section was cited.
So, what this does, Commissioners, is basically, we looked at our past practice, found that it wasn't a good practice, so we want to make sure that, A, that we cite the proper authority whenever we would, or utilize the proper authority when anyone would be cited for either a sidewalk or a driveway issue. Driveway in the right-of-way is the question, and then we have good criteria for that.
Okay.
I understand the big picture. I guess the devil's in the details again when we start going around to, with our tape measures, measuring different things. I'm assuming that'll come after second reading.
Correct. The resolution is the criteria that the city engineer established and is suggesting would be the criteria by which the need for repair or condemnation would be identified.
Okay. And the city will have their ducks in a row as far as their sidewalks?
The expectation with this would be a uniform standard.
Because I guarantee you, they'll point out every single one of them.
That's typical of code enforcement, whether it be sidewalks or any other item.
Yeah, and one thing, Commissioners, as you probably already are aware, with all the employees that we do have and all the functions that we take care of, we really don't have time for people to literally be sidewalk police, walking up and down every sidewalk. So, there's a pretty good chance that most all of this will probably be in response to a call or something that's seen by chance while we're doing something else, and we'll have to look at the criteria and make a determination, but it's not as if we're going to be walking up and down everyone's sidewalk right now. The main reason, some people ask, "Well, why would the city even be interested in this?" Well, it's because their insurance company is. That's one reason. The other is, is we feel we should have sidewalks that are safe for people to travel. We don't want people getting hurt on them, but if we do allow someone to get hurt on our sidewalk, we're aware there's an issue, and we don't resolve the issue when we're notified, we can have some exposure with that as well. So, those are really the two reasons why we're addressing it, and the fact that we don't believe it was, the past practice was proper.
Any other questions to staff? Any public comment? Bring it back to the Commission. Any public comment? Bring it back to the Commission.
Everybody, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance 09-10494, amending the pertinent sections of Salina Code pertaining to the construction, reconstruction, repair of sidewalks, and repealing existing Section 35-137.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance 0910494. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.8, approved grant request from Matrix Electronic Measuring Incorporated to assist with ongoing product redevelopment, foreign patent protection, and creation of eight additional jobs for Salina.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have in front of you a grant request from Matrix. Let's just call them Matrix rather than the whole name. This is a little different than our traditional, what we call SEDIC requests. That's your Salina Economic Development Incentives Council, and that council's responsible for making recommendations for incentives from a fund, which is 12 and 1/2% of, what was that, 1/4 cent sales tax, which is barely still in place today. And they make recommendations for these, and then obviously, the final action is with you. This is different because most of what we brought you is that typical, you know, training, building addition type thing with a primary manufacturer. This is more of an entrepreneurial situation in which the product is basically at final stages of product development, and what they're looking to do is to finish the product development and obtain foreign patents. What's noted in the application letter is that Matrix is requesting $100,000 in economic development grant for the, kind of the final product development of a stereoscopic 3D computerized measuring system with related software and also the foreign patent protection. What it is, it's a WAND. It's a handheld wireless standalone-type tool that provides triangulated measurements with a minimum accuracy of 2 millimeters. And while we see a lot of technology in the movies today, one would think that this is available to everyone. It isn't, and this is really a new thing out in the, potentially out on the market here very soon. What they're looking to do is target the automobile, or automotive collision repair industry, a $38 billion industry to begin with, with the possibility of a lot of other applications that may come out of that. The key is, is it does, it produces exact measurements that can be archived, retrieved, reexamined, and accessed, and currently, there really isn't a means to do that very well. So, when you're looking for precise comparative measurements, this tool would allow that to happen. To date, there's been over $2 million raised from local Salina investors. The SEDIC grant would help the company achieve its next development goals for the WAND. What they're looking at is the addition of eight additional employees with an average wage of about $52,000. These are more of the administrative, technical employees, not manufacturing-type employees. The manufacturing of this product is not currently in Salina. There's a hope that it would be, but that's not actually part of this grant request. We have taken this, and we run the typical Wichita State University benefit cost model. We want to look at each of the governmental entities to make sure that the benefit is at least one. It does meet that. Couple more things on this request. Basically, real quick, the fiscal note, this again would come out of that special 1/4 cent sales tax. This and really any other local development, primary job-type opportunities would fit under goal number three in your strategic plan for a community of quality mixed-use development redevelopment. We've given you a couple alternatives. One would be to approve, the second to deny. Obviously, there's anything in between that as well. What I would like to say is, is we've specified in here that based on the trade secrets, financial affairs of the company that are protected is confidential and also can be protected by means of executive session, that we want to let you know that certainly you could go in executive session. Actually anticipate most of your questions will relate into their business plan and trade secrets and so forth. So, we do have representatives of Matrix here that can explain those if you request them to do so, and obviously, the staff support for this project from the city, the airport authority, and the local Chamber of Commerce. So, with that, I'll give it back to you and try to answer questions that I can answer here. And again, if you have questions that are related to trade secrets, we would recommend that you go into executive session for whatever period of time would allow you to ask those questions and get answers to those questions.
Questions of staff. Where is the manufacturing right now?
I'm going to ask a member of the company to come up, but I believe it's a location in Texas. I don't have the exact location in front of me.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. And your question was...
Could we get your name and address, please?
Sorry, Jan Shrak. Our office is at 1725 Vor-Tex Avenue here in Salina, Kansas.
And where is the manufacturing?
We have a company in Wichita, Kansas right now, Rapid Product Services there, and they have a sister company in Dallas, Texas, an engineering firm, and we now have the first 10 units being assembled between Wichita and their sister company in Texas.
And is it your plan to move the manufacturing to Salina?
It is our plan to. It's not in the existing executive summary. All the jobs, as the city manager said, are the technical jobs, but we've entertained the idea, definitely want to bring the jobs for manufacturing and assembly back to Salina.
Under what timeline?
You know, it would depend on the amount of sales that we have. We're visiting with a company right now who are looking at putting an order in for 300 units, and as we have these orders, these orders in, then we'll look at bringing the... then we'll look at bringing the manufacturing back to Salina. So we'd like to do that within a year to 18 months. Maybe sooner.
On the blue sheet, it says administrative/technical and product marketing personnel. And under the agreement, it says product development and completion of foreign patent protection.
Right.
So just what exactly are these people going to do? Are they lawyers? Are we paying your legal fees?
No, we -- no, we already paid for those. We have three patents, three patent applications in. And so to do foreign patents, there are three patent cooperation treaties that need to be filed that coincide with each U.S. patent. And so that gives you a year to 18 months to decide what countries you want to take the WAND into to sell. But it gives you time for that.
And that's what these people will be doing?
That's a patent cooperation treaty. But the software is strictly for the software development of the WAND, finalizing that.
How many of these people will be in the software development part?
The majority of the money is in software development. We anticipate about $80,000 in software development, about 20 in the patent cooperation treaties.
Are there other questions, the staff?
Would it be okay to -- I'm sorry. Would it be okay to clarify maybe one issue that I should have changed in the executive summary and didn't?
Sure.
Okay. We originally thought with the Matrix strategy that we would only have one product, and that would be in the collision repair market. And we subsequently have found that we have these secondary markets to take it to, such as crime scene, evidence gathering, measuring traffic accident scenes, hoping to have a WAND in each police car, and also into dermatology clinics and several others areas. We have on our talks about in the executive summary, we have Travis Rhodes, who is an FBI intelligence agent in Kansas City, and he's looking for the forensic gathering piece of that with us and working with us on that. He's on our advisory board. But what we're looking at doing is, since we're going to be able to take this into other markets, we're looking at not looking at exiting soon because we originally thought we'd just have one product and go into one market. But since we're going into several, many secondary markets, and that's why our board and advisory board will help us decide which secondary market that will be the next challenge for us, we will license the technology into, like, the collision repair industry. And then we'll go and license the technology into the secondary markets. So I apologize for not changing that in the executive summary.
Did you bring -- excuse me, did you bring the WAND today?
Yes, we did.
Is it something you can show? I don't know how many Commissioners got to see it. I was privileged to get to see it the other day.
This is a handheld device. I just turn it on. And whatever you look through, you just simply turn it on, and whatever you see in the computerized images, that is what, right here, can actually make sure. And then that picture is now what you took. And you're able to choose any pixel on that monitor and measure it length with height and depth. It's targetless, and it truly is revolutionary technology.
Okay, thank you.
So the bottom line is, this would bring potentially up to eight jobs to Salina within the next year to year and a half?
That's what we have in our business plan. We look to have 23 jobs by 2012. And that does not include the manufacturing jobs that we're hoping to bring to Salina.
And the combination of those eight jobs is almost about $400,000 in payroll, is that correct?
That's right.
Would you explain to me again your comments about the licensing and how that changes your executive summary?
Okay. For instance, we've been in contact and have had meetings with Chief Automotive Technologies, who's owned by Dover Corporation. They're in the collision repair industry. And we've had visits with Manheim, who sell 10 million vehicles a year in their -- over the internet and at their auto auction houses. And also with another automotive company who distributes equipment throughout the United States. And so we would be looking at picking one of these people to, to actually take the WAND technology to the collision repair industry, to the $38.2 billion industry. And then we would go and approach, you know, other areas, secondary markets, whether it's traffic accident scenes or crime scenes. And we'd look at that market, develop the WAND, maybe shrink it. Once, since we have this technology, we're able to change the base leg of the WAND and then add different cameras, whether it would have, like, micron measurements for dermatology clinic or change the cameras to wide-angle lenses for other applications. And so then we would take that, as we went into that other, the next secondary market, we would probably redefine the WAND itself as far as the size and shape of it. But yet, our intellectual property is what the secret is to how we measure in our algorithms. So then we would license that measuring technology to that specific industry.
My struggle with this, and in the blue sheet, we make reference to Salina Vortex, Geoprobe, Tony's, Great Plains, CASA, Blue Beacon. And I view this completely different. And Mr. Gage made reference to it, is the fact that those people have facilities, extensive facilities here in Salina. And while I understand Matrix is a startup right now, you have no facilities in the community, and you are, by reason of your address, apparently sharing office space with one of these corporations.
That's right.
And that's very troubling for me because knowledge packs up and leaves very quickly, whereas manufacturing doesn't.
Well, I can--
What can you do to?
To assure you of that?
Right.
I guess, you know, the past history would probably be the best way. My husband and I were born in Salina. We were raised here, raised our family here. We've always been an advocate of Salina. And we want to bring as many jobs as possible to Salina, and that includes manufacturing. We want to make Salina a great city to keep our kids here with good jobs and also give back to the community. So our past history is being an advocate for Salina.
Then I'll ask the building out on Diamond Drive, when will that be erected?
The building on Diamond Drive?
Right.
We're still looking at that. It's been -- that's been about eight years since we had first looked at constructing that first building out there. And so it's just now, the benefit district is just now completing the project. So we have to go back and look and revisit that. It's just been enough times from that period of time.
We've spent how much out in that part of the neighborhood?
I don't have the number in front of me, Mayor. There's quite a bit of -- there's roadwork with extension of Diamond Drive and some pretty extensive water and some storm drainage. It's a few hundred thousand dollars at least, but I don't have that exact number in front of me. And again, for the potential, you know, and development of those properties.
I'm kind of in the same boat, Mayor Venier, as I certainly like the idea. Just like to feel a little better level of certainty that the money's going to be used here. I don't know how we can get that.
I have a question to ask, but I don't think you want me to ask it in public. So I would like to make a motion that we recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competibly disadvantage the corporation and reconvene at 4:53.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recess into executive session and reconvene at 4:53. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We're in executive session.
Commissioners, just want to reference to the -- of course, the staff team includes the airport authority director and the Chamber of Commerce director, just for the public to know that. And then obviously, the members of the Matrix team that are going to, may be able to explain, if you need them to, questions that you have, trade secret information, so.
Okay.
Just for the public to know of that.
Thank you.
-- today. It's being billed as a three-pronged effort to draw private investors into a partnership with--
Just didn't tell you anything we didn't? That wasn't in the blue sheet. That was supposed to be cashed in. Wasn't the issue.
We're back in open meeting now. In looking at this, I have shared some of my discomfort with it. I still have it. Again, I go back to the blue sheet and other grants that I've been involved with have been along the lines of organizations that have a physical presence in the community. And to me, a little bit of brick and mortar goes a long way. Unfortunately, I'm struggling with this. I wonder if it's too soon for this grant request? I would like to -- are there other comments, but Commissioners?
I would just say I share a lot of those. It's an intriguing idea. Maybe it's the context that we're in at the moment. We're, you know, our national government tax, much larger amounts than $100,000 are going for purposes that weren't the intent. I'd just like to have a little higher degree of certainty that the money is going to stay in the community.
The only question I have is, without this, where -- what will you do? What is your next plan without this funding?
Ma'am, if--
I'm sorry.
Sorry, TV audience.
Yeah. To move forward. We -- it's not an idea. It's actual product. And we have, we have the first seven of these have been assembled, and we're just going to get ready to put the cameras in there. So we're way beyond the idea that it is just an idea. It actually is a product that's been validated in many markets. Soled International, we met with them in November. And they said that they had traveled worldwide for this, for measuring for the collision repair industry. They had found two that they liked. One, they decided not to pursue, and they're actually looking at pursuing, purchasing of another company in December. And they said, because of the WAND, the technology is absolutely brilliant. They are not pursuing that measuring. This is the best they've seen worldwide. So it was, it's not only market validation in the United States, but also internationally. They're traveling here to Salina from France to work on putting a purchase order into Matrix.
Well, are we ready to take some action?
Yes.
Thank you. After hearing everybody's comments, and I know that there's still a lot of uneasiness on this, I, Mayor Venier, I move that we refer this back to staff and possibly the chamber and the SEDIC for just a little bit more study and implementation, possibly.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded